Thank you very much for coming tonight. And welcome to the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of all of the deceased local public servants who had passed away over the last year. Any firefighter, teacher, police officer, town hall employee, any elected or appointed official or town employee. Please let us pause for a moment. Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to introduce the people who spent the last several months creating the budget and implementing a spending plan that brought us here tonight. Over in the corner here are members of the Clinton's Finance Committee, Aaron Powell, Bob Latini, Bill McGrae, Mike Chakonski, Paul Cherabini, and Barney Hastings. Thank you very much for your service this past year. Barney could not be with us tonight, but he will be resigning from FinCom at the end of this month. And I wanted to take this time to thank him for his three years of dedicated service to that board. And we will be looking for a new member of the Finance Committee, probably sometime this summer. Members of the Select Board, Chair Matt Kobus, Sean Carrigan, Mary Rose Ditko, Ed DeValt, and Julie Perouse. Thank you for your service this past year. Also with us tonight, Michael Ward, Town Administrator, Angela Snow. Are you shy, Angela? Is that what happened? Assistant Town Administrator, and Robert Gibbons, Town Solicitor, and our Secretary for tonight's meeting, Mary Ann Cusa-Ril. And I'm Terry Ngano, and I'll be your moderator tonight. So I need to go over the rules like we always do, and tonight we may need some of those rules. I don't know. We'll see what happens. We're going to keep it civilized. Let the uncivilized stay out there. We'll be civilized in here. All questions, comments, or discussions should be directed to me. I may not know the answer, but I can redirect your question. To speak tonight, you raise your hand. Wait to be recognized by me, and then come forward to the microphone. Make sure to state your name and address before speaking. Please, no personalities in your remarks. Please keep your discussion focused on the article in question only. And the only votes I count are those seated in the hall. Sorry, but for those standing, your votes will not be counted. The only people in the hall right now are registered voters in the town of Clinton or a few non-residents or non-voters that I've given permission to be here. We do have a formal procedure to handle amendments. They're right down here on these clipboards down front. All proposed amendments should be presented to me in writing. If you wish to amend any article, please come down front and obtain an amendment form. Fill it out completely and then give it to me when you make your proposal. This will make things easier for all of us. Unless I hear an objection, I will dispense with the formal reading of the warrant. And I do want to say beforehand that I, tonight, I will not agree to any changes in the order of the articles. We have 41 articles to cover. They're all important, and so we're going to keep the order as is. All right? We're all set? Let's get started. Article One.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to receive the reports of the town officers.
Second. All right. Article One is to officially accept the annual reports from each town department. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, raise your cards now, please. And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved. Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elective officials of the town as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Said salaries and compensation to be effective from July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money therefore.
Second. All right. Article Two is the usual article we have every single year. It fixes the salaries and compensation. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, cards up, please. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved. Article Three is your budget.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from the current tax levy the sum of $58,582.305 and to appropriate and transfer from assessors' overlay reserve the sum of $176,116 and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $15,900 and to raise and appropriate the sum of $600,000 from the ambulance enterprise fund and to appropriate from the trans... From the... Hold on one second. From the ambulance enterprise fund retained earnings the sum of $369,413 and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $211,750 and raise and appropriate the sum of $2,600 from the water sewer enterprise fund and to appropriate from the water sewer enterprise fund retained earnings the sum of $41,556 and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $27,500 and raise and appropriate the sum of $640,000 from the rubbish enterprise fund and to appropriate from the rubbish enterprise fund retained earnings the sum of $49,934 and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $14,500 and to appropriate from the landfill enterprise fund retained earnings the sum of $434,300. Said sums to be used to defray town charges from July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025, as those charges appear in the Finance Committee report of recommendations.
Second. All right. If you go to the back of your warrant, and by the way, there are more warrants out on the table if you didn't get one. And we usually go through this rather quickly, but at the end, we'll give you some more time. So we're starting... It's the back of your warrant. Starts with number 114, Moderator. And again, we'll go through each one quickly, and then at the end, we'll give you some time to look at it one more time. All right. Not a hell of a lot to discuss there, is there? Select Board. Finance Committee. Town Accountant. Board of Assessors. Treasurer Collector. Parking Fines. Facilities and Grounds. Human Resources. Town Clerk. Conservation Commission. Planning Board. Zoning Board. Monticujus Planning Commission. And by the way, there was an error on that one of $139. It has been rectified by what Chair Kobus read to you as far as where the funding is coming from, and I'll show you where it ends up at the end of this. But the mistake is, it just didn't carry over. Economic Development Office. Insurance Miscellaneous. Police Department. Gas Plumbing Inspectors. Sealer of Weights and Measures. Electrical Inspector. Emergency Management. Animal Control Officer. School Department. Department of Public Works. Board of Health. Council on Aging. Department of Veteran Services. Bigelow Public Library. Parks and Recreation. And here is the rest of it. And then the next part is the enterprise budgets. So you see ambulance enterprise fund. Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Rubbish Enterprise Fund. Landfill Enterprise Fund. And so here is the grand total on the top of the next page, the Budget Summary. And again, that summary has, the slight error that was made of $139 has been rectified by the funding that Chair Kobus mentioned, but I will show you on the next page after that, other available funds. It's the last category mentioned. Under overlay surplus, that $139 will be added to the 535-977 to make up for that adding error. All right. Why don't you take a minute to look that over? Questions, comments, or discussion on your town budget? If not, all in favor of approving the annual budget, please signify by raising your card now, please. And opposed? The article has been approved. Thank you very much. Do we want to reconsider this?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we reconsider Article Three.
All right. So here's reconsideration. I think all of you know that by now, but I always have fun explaining it anyway. If you vote in favor of reconsideration, you nullify the last vote you just took, and we start discussion again on this article. If you are opposed to reconsideration, your last vote stands, and this article cannot be brought up again tonight. Okay? So, all those in favor of reconsidering the last vote, signify by raising your card now. And opposed? Thank you. Reconsideration fails, and the budget has been passed. Thank you. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer and collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement with a banking institution for fiscal year 2025 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second. All right. Article Four simply allows town officials to put your money in an interest-bearing account. That's what it's all about. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, raise your cards, please. And opposed to Article Four? Thank you. The article is approved. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,800, said sum to be expended for social services in accordance with programs as approved by the Select Board.
Second. All right. This is our annual standard contribution. Doesn't change to local social services that help our own community. Questions, comments, discussion? There being none. All in favor of Article Five? Signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. Article Five is approved. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000, said sum to be expended as the town of Clinton's share to the Wachusett Health Education Action Team, which committee is a delicate agency of the United Way of Tri-County.
Second. All right. This again is the same article as always. It's our annual assessment to wheat. Questions or comments? There being none. All in favor of Article Six? Cards up. And opposed? Thank you. Article Six is approved. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws to set the limits on the fiscal year 2025, total amounts that may be expended from each of the town's revolving funds established under the town's administrative bylaws. Gas Plumbing Inspection, $50,000. Council on Aging, $75,000. Town Hall Use, $5,000. Old Home Day, $40,000. Fuller Field, $5,000. Town Clerk, $25,000.
Second. All right. So this article simply sets limits on the amount of money that various groups can take from their revolving accounts every year. Questions? There being none. All in favor of Article Seven? Signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. Article Seven is approved. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the assessors' overlay reserve account the sum of $50,000, said sum to be used to continue the veterans and senior tax rebate program for fiscal year 2025.
Second. All right. Thank you. This article takes $50,000 from one fund, moves it into the tax rebate program so that our senior citizens and our veterans can take part in this program to lower their taxes. Questions or comments? There being none. All in favor of Article Eight? Cards up. And opposed? Thank you. Article Eight is approved. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $150,000 to the health insurance trust fund.
Second. Thank you. Article Nine just simply serves to support and offset the costs of health insurance for town retirees. Questions, comments? There being none. All in favor of Article Nine? Cards up. And opposed? Thank you. The Article Nine has been approved. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $750,000 to the stabilization fund.
Second. All right. This article simply transfers money from free cash to stabilization. Questions, comments?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I just want to commend Michael Ward and his financial team. While neighboring towns are raiding their stabilization fund to pay for their budgets, we're adding what I think is one of the largest amounts in recent years. Job well done.
Thank you. And thank you, Michael, for doing that. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor of Article Ten? Cards up. And opposed? Thank you. Article Ten is approved. Article Eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the water sewer enterprise fund retained earnings the sum of $150,000, said sum to be used by the Superintendent of Public Works Department for fiscal year 2024 expenses.
Second. All right. Article Eleven is taking surplus money so that we can complete some more projects before June 30. Questions, comments? There being none. All in favor of Article Eleven? Cards up, please. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. Article Eleven has been approved. Article Twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $1,388.61, said sum to be expended by the fire chief for the following unpaid bill, specialty vehicles.
Second. All right. Article Twelve is an unpaid bill, so it needs a four-fifths vote, and it's funded from free cash. Questions or comments? There being none. All in favor? Cards up of Article Twelve? Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. Article Twelve is approved. Article Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from water sewer enterprise fund retained earnings the sum of $4,074.45, said sum to be expended by the Superintendent of Public Works for the following unpaid bill, National Grid.
Second. Once again, this is a four-fifths vote. It's money coming from retained earnings to pay a DPW unpaid bill. Questions? There being none. All in favor? Cards up, please. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The Article Thirteen is approved. Article Fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $30,000, said sum to be expended by the town administrator for the following unpaid bill, National Grid.
Second. All right. This came from the past two years of the conversion costs when we went to the different streetlights, and it's funded by free cash also. Questions, comments? If not, all in favor of Article Fourteen? Cards up. And opposed? Thank you. Article Fourteen is passed. Where are we? Fifteen? Yep.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town of Clinton vote to appropriate the sum of $139,525,48 for the purpose of paying costs for the design, construction, and equipping of a new Clinton middle school building at 100 West Boylston Street, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least 50 years and for which the town of Clinton may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Permanent Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer collector is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Law Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of Clinton acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a nonentitlement, discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town of Clinton incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Clinton, provided further that any grant the town of Clinton may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed lesser of 178.24% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass. General Law 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and a half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Clinton and the MSBA.
Second. All right. This is the article about your new middle school. It's a borrowing article that will require a two-thirds vote, and obviously, this is just step one in the process. If it were to be approved tonight, it has to be approved next Monday night. It'll be a ballot vote during our annual election, which is next Monday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., June 10. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article 15?
Eugene Nietzsche from Berlin Street. I read something the other day that said they made a mistake in 1975 by taking a cheap route and building a 50-year school, and yet it seems like we're going to repeat that mistake. Also, over and above the $139,000, this just seems like we're handing you an open check. Is there any way that you're going to come up with some firm numbers for this project?
Thank you. More discussion.
Just come up.
Just come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Hi. I'm Joel LePointe at 921B, Bridgefield Circle. And if you were to build this new school, what would be the demolition cost of the old school? Or would you just allow it to be a dilapidated building? You have the old elementary school that's still standing. The middle school you claim will cost $100 million to bring it up to code. So I'm assuming if you want to use that school to rent out to somebody, you'd have to spend $100 million to update it, to make it viable for somebody to use. And you also have, I believe, the old water treatment plant that is still standing as well. So as the gentleman just said, in 50 years, when you build new schools, are the current schools that you currently have still going to be standing as long as, as well as the older schools? Have you even thought beyond 50 years? I mean, a lot of the homes in this city are definitely older than 50 years. I'm assuming we could build a school with today's technology that would last at least 100 or even 150 years. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Steve. I allowed Steve Meyer, your Superintendent of Schools. Unfortunately, he lives in Lancaster, but you'll...
Just over the line.
Steve, go ahead.
All right. I'll answer, I guess, a couple of those points. The first one, the budget that was presented is a budget that really has been vetted. There's a whole team here with me tonight. We have our Doran Whittier, our owner's, representative from Doran Whittier, our owner's project manager, Lamro Pagano, our designers, and Frontaine Brothers, our construction manager. There's a very detailed process that we've been going through, where you work out exact square footages, costs, allowable expenses, reimbursable expenses. So when we come up with this number, this is a pretty firm maximum number. I mean, it's construction, so there's some contingencies in there, but it shouldn't be going over that. The second point, I would say, is that that number is kind of all-inclusive. It does include demolition of the current school, because that's actually in design going to be repurposed as the new parking lot and some new fields in front of it. So we're sort of moving the school over to where the fields are and then kind of replacing the parking lot and fields where the current school is. So that's all included in this number. So it's not like we'd build a school and then we have to come back and talk about demolition or have to talk about parking or grounds or anything. That number is for the entire project, all the way down to, there's an allowance for trees to be parked in there, I think, or planted in there. So that's, I think that answers the two points.
So demolition costs are all worked in there already?
Correct.
Of the old school. Thank you. Still on questions, comments, or discussion? Yes. Oops. I'm sorry. You're next.
Larry Colby from Berlin Street. I don't think it was a mistake to build a 50-year school. The school lasted the 50 years it was supposed to last time, and I assume will this time. The facility is 50 years old. It's time to replace it.
Thank you.
Larry Binder from Water Street. In looking at the plans or in looking at the video, the school project appears to be, how I would say, opulent or... the school project appears to be, how I would say, opulent or extravagant. Anything that's gone into the planning to take a more conservative approach to be able to use money elsewhere, this seems to be a really expensive and fancy, and does it need to be so?
Thank you. Steve, do you want to answer that? I...
I guess, I'll address two points. The first one about, you know, anything, and I don't know where the statement was made, that building the school in 1974, the current school, was a mistake. I just do think it was built during a different era, and it was built during an era where it was built differently than how we actually do education. It was built during that open concept era, and us having to try to sort of shoehorn the classrooms we need into that have caused some of the educational constraints that we're trying to address. In terms of like, long-range planning, I think that's what we are doing by looking at this right now, in terms of the fact that, yes, I hope that the elementary school and the high school are standing for 100 years, those are very functional buildings right now, they were built recently, but they are going to probably need, in another 20 years, major upgrades, maybe things like a roof or a boiler system, but it's not, shouldn't be nearly as substantial as what we're facing in the middle school, where you're really trying to transition the entire, you're trying to transition the entire educational foundation of the building. That was like, two points ago, what was the last one? I forget the...
Oplum.
Optimization, thank you. MSBA has very clear guidelines that they go through as far as like, what is the class size you're supposed to have? What is the size of a gym? What's the size of cafeteria? How many bathrooms you need to have? That's all pretty prescribed through the MSBA process, and we did a lot of work to make sure that we were maximizing our reimbursement, and not going any, really going over in any non-reimbursable square footages. I'd say, I think there's two areas where we might be over a little bit in square footage. One is the gymnasium, and one is the cafeteria. The purpose of that is because the way that MSBA reimburses a gymnasium, it's almost unusable, you know, there would be no bleachers, anything in there, and we don't want to build a school, you don't want to make this type of investment, and then have everyone shows up and says, boy, this gym is terrible, right? So we wanted to make sure that we had the necessary square footage for that. Same thing with the gym, the cafeteria, the cafeteria is, will be more of like a cafeteria, that's what the MSBA reimburses for a middle school, they don't put auditoriums in there. So the square footage was increased a little bit in that to address our, our needs, and also, we tried to make sure that the square footage and the height would hopefully allow us to get cheerleaders in there, to have room to practice when they can, so that they're not having to practice here, where they currently practice. So I think that was those points.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Yes?
Taylor Crane from Harbor Street. I think we're in a bit of a catch-22, in that we have an old school that needs replacing, but a new school that is outrageously expensive. I would ask the town to perhaps consider a long-term savings plan, so that in the next school that needs replacing, we don't need to go with hand outstretched to Beacon Hill, we can pay for it ourself, and take care of our own kids here at home.
Thank you. Any, yes?
Mr. Moderator, Bill Conley, 46 Wentup Street. Is it okay if I face...
Oh, sure, I don't mind looking at your back.
The town meeting?
That's fine.
Thank you. I don't want to give you my back, but I've been serving on the school committee for the past six months, okay? I volunteered because I felt I had a wealth of knowledge and experience to contribute to this project. Instead, I found out I had a lot to learn, and it's a lot more complicated than I thought it would be. I started with this question. I'm 70 years old, retired, trying to get back, get by, on limited savings and social security. I've helped pay for three school projects, and I really don't think I can afford this one. My taxes alone are more than my first mortgage. Why should I and people like me vote yes? And here's what I came up with. I could say, do it for the kids, they deserve the best we have to offer. I could say, do it for health and safety. There are no fire sprinklers in the school. There's no security cameras, no lockdown systems, no bulletproof glass, the building is full of asbestos, and after dealing with COVID, we learned that the ventilation system is inadequate, and the air our kids are breathing isn't, doesn't meet today's standards. The building committee, together with a great team of consultants, has been evaluating the options for the past three years. They didn't just put this together a couple of months ago and say, this is what it's going to cost. They determined that the best use of our resources is a new building. You've already spent $1 million to get to this point. The best time to build a school or any other project was yesterday. Construction costs never go down. They might slow down in the rate of increase, but they never go backwards. This is not a zero-sum game. If you vote no, you will lose state reimbursement of 70-plus million dollars. You can't kick the can for a few years and expect to get back into the state program. If you opt out now, you're out for a long time. There's a lot of other communities waiting in line to get that reimbursement, and it's going to be a while if we try to delay. Right now, the building needs a new roof. The HVAC system needs major repairs. This isn't something you can do in a couple of years, it's something you have to do now if you're going to keep that building open. These costs will trigger energy code, seismic code, accessibility code, elevator, sprinkler system, and a whole host of other upgrades. You can't just do a roof. If, if an improvement cost exceeds 25 or 30% of the assessed value of the building, you have to bring it up to today's standards. That's prohibitively expensive. It's as much as you're going to have to pay for the new school, or the town share of a new school. If you vote no, you'll be faced with tens of millions of dollars of repairs that will cost you just as much as a new building, and you'll end up with an older building that still needs to be replaced soon. Don't waste our hard-earned tax dollars putting lipstick on a pig. Get the highest and best use of your tax dollars. Vote yes for a new, safe, efficient school. Don't pour your money down the drain. Vote yes for the future. It's the best deal you're going to get. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any more discussion? Yes?
Robert. Robert Epstein, 353 Church Street. I don't often agree with Mr. Conley, but oftentimes, oftentimes, we get here and we agree. Everything he said is 100% true. Two things, the building committee goes through an incredible process to actually design and figure out what the school's going to be, and works hand-in-hand with the architects. It's an incredibly long and involved process. While I was on the school committee, every year, we were putting Band-Aids on the middle school. The town's to be commended that we've maintained that building as well as we have, but everything he said is true. It's just going to be pouring money down a rattle, and we won't get any of that money back, so 100%.
Thank you. Yes? Sure. I was about to say that anyway. I was hoping, second. All in favor of moving the question and getting to the vote, signify by raising your card now, thank you, and opposed, thank you. Let's vote. All those in favor, no, and I just want to remind everybody, this is only step one, there is a step two, and that's next week, all right? All those in favor? No. We already did that. All those in, all those in favor of Article 15, signify by raising your card now, please? All right, and hands down, and those opposed, and please keep your hands up, I just want to make, okay, got you. Thank you very much. The article is approved, Article 15. Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, I'll move to reconsider Article 15.
Reconsider Article 15. Remember, for reconsideration, if you vote in favor of reconsideration, we start all over with that question again. If you vote opposed to reconsideration, the last vote stands as is. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 15, signify by raising your card now, please, and all, and those opposed, cards up, please. All right, reconsideration is defeated, and Article 15 will not be spoken of again tonight. All right, Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund, the sum of $230,000, said some to be used by the Community Television Department for support of cable access-related service operations, including personnel, programming, expenses, and equipment.
Second.
All right, Article 16 and 17 are two articles that deal with improvements to our cable access system, and the money is already in the cable account. So this particular article will be used to fund regular annual operating expenses. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor of Article 16, cards up, please, and opposed, thank you, Article 16 is approved. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund, the sum of $300,000, said some to be used by the Community Television Department for support of cable access-related capital needs, including system capital improvements, equipment upgrades, studio design, and construction.
Second.
All right, this is the other, the second article on the cable account. This money, again, is already in our account, would be used to capital improvements and equipment upgrades. Questions, comments? If not, all in favor, cards up, please, and all those opposed to Article 17. Thank you, the article is approved. Article 18.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash, the sum of $1,080,115, said some to be expended by the select board for the proportionate share of a participating governmental units, PGU, self-insured active plan, employer-run-out deposit. In the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group, the resulting proportion shall be used by MNHG to pay the run-out claims as determined by each of the carriers.
Second.
All right, in English, what that means is, as you know, the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group shut down recently, but the town of Clinton is still responsible for some claims, those claims that are pending. So this money will be taken from free cash to handle those pending claims. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, cards up, please, and opposed, thank you, Article 18 is approved. Article 19.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvements Stabilization Fund, the sum of $250,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for road resurfacing and infrastructure improvements as approved by the select board.
Second.
All right, this is taking $250,000 out of a special stabilization fund to bring it so that we can now work on some projects and get some projects done. Questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, sir.
Eugene Nietzsche, Berlin Street. I think this amount should be doubled. The roads in this town are atrocious.
David Sadowski, Cedar Street. These funds here that are being appropriated, are they only for roads and infrastructure, or can they be used for a truck or something else like that?
No, I believe it's strictly infrastructure, roads, pipes, all of that. And again, this is money that's already in an account. It's in there so that when it's time to do a project, we take it out of that account, so we can use it. That's really what it's all about.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
If I just wanted to make a clarification as well. There was $1 million appropriate last year, there's still a significant balance of that money, this additional money, and we get state money every year as well, too. So there will be much more than $250,000 spent this year on roads. This is just a piece of the puzzle to finish off the project.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, all those in...
Terry?
Yes?
Two-thirds.
Yes, yes, it is a two-thirds vote, thank you. All those in favor of Article 19, signify by raising your card now, and opposed, thank you, Article 19 has passed. Article 20.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash, the sum of $80,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Facilities and Grounds for the purchase and installation of a new boiler for the Clinton Council on Aging Center.
Second.
All right, Article 20, just simply for a new boiler for the COA Center, and it's coming out of free cash. Questions, comments? There being none. All in favor of Article 20, cards up, please, and opposed, thank you, Article 20 has been approved. Article 21.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash, the sum of $75,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Facilities and Grounds for the purchase of a mini excavator.
Second.
All right, this is for the Facilities Department, $75,000 for a mini excavator. Questions, comments?
Eugene Nietzsche, Berlin Street. I'm just curious, why an excavator instead of a little compact loader backhoe? With an excavator, you're going to need a truck and trailer to pull it around where you want to go. The little backhoe, which I looked up today, 42,000 to 52,000, and you can drive it over the road?
Yes.
Plus, the money you save can go towards more roads.
Mr. Kopus?
Sure, unless Mr. Farragut wants to come up.
He doesn't.
Brian Farragut, Facilities Director, 1 Worcester Street. So this, this equipment is for our cemeteries, so we have tight quarters, and this is the reason why we are looking to get this piece of equipment. We currently utilize a DPW to dig our graves, and we're looking to kind of take that burden off of them, and this is the, this is the equipment that can get into tight spaces and do the job for us.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? There being none. All those in favor of Article 21, signify by raising your card, and opposed, thank you, the article has been approved. Article 22.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash, the sum of $360,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Facilities and Grounds for the repair and rehabilitation of the carriage house located on the grounds of Clinton Council on Aging Center.
Second.
All right, repair and renovation of the carriage house at the COA Center. Any questions? All those in favor of Article 22, signify by raising your cards now, thank you, and opposed, thank you, Article 22 has been approved. Article 23.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash, the sum of $45,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the purchase of a superintendent vehicle.
Second.
All right, this is for a new vehicle for the DPW superintendent, it's taken from free cash. Questions, comments, or discussion? You're wearing a path, sir.
Eugene Nietzsche, Berlin Street. I'm wondering why we gotta get a new truck. The building inspector, Board of Health, they got hand-me-downs from the police department. Why do we gotta spend $45,000 on another truck?
I'm not sure of that, sir. I think they probably have a new vehicle by now. I think they probably have a new vehicle by now. I could be wrong. Somebody want to answer that? We do have new vehicles for, what, the COA Center? I think the Board of Health, am I right on that? The Veterans Group? Veterans Agent? So we are getting up into the, the century anyway, as far as modern cars and good, good vehicles. Any, any other comments on that? All right. If not, all in favor of Article twenty-three, cards up? Thank you, and opposed? Thank you. The article is approved. I know your arms are getting tired. We're more than halfway through, folks. Article twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $110,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the purchase of a new compact front-end loader.
Second.
All right, this is for a new front-end loader for the DPW. Again, it's from free cash, money already in our accounts. Questions, comments, or discussion? If not, all in favor of Article twenty-four, cards up? And opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-four has been approved. Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $180,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the purchase of a new six-wheel dump truck.
Second.
All right, this is for a new six-wheel dump truck for the DPW. Once again, money's already in the town accounts. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor of Article twenty-five, cards up? Thank you, and opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-five is approved. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to authorize, under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws, a lease purchase financing agreement for a total approximate amount of $210,000 for the acquisition of a new rear-load refuse truck, and that the Superintendent of Public Works shall be authorized to enter into such agreement on behalf of the town, subject to approval of an appropriation for the first-year payment from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund.
Second.
All right, this money is coming from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund. It's a new rear-load refuse truck. In my neighborhood, we call that the trash truck, but anyway, that's what we call it here. The two-thirds vote is required. It's a lease purchase. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor of Article twenty-six signify by raising your card? Thank you, and opposed? Thank you. The article is approved. Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town, I moved at the town to authorize, under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws, a lease purchase financing agreement for a total approximate amount of $500,000 for the acquisition of a new ambulance, and that the fire chief shall be authorized to enter into such agreement on behalf of the town, subject to approval of an appropriation for the first-year payment from the ambulance enterprise fund.
Second.
All right, this is for another lease purchase. This is a new ambulance from, and again, the money from the ambulance enterprise fund. It's a two-thirds vote. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, cards up? Thank you, and opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-seven is approved. Article twenty-eight.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $27,500, said some to be utilized to demolish and remove deteriorated barn at 211 R. Chase Street, an open space parcel known as Forty Caves, Clinton.
Second.
All right, this is to demolish an old barn that's off of Francis Street on the Acre, and it's part of open space property that the town now owns. And again, it's funded by free cash. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor of Article twenty-eight? Thank you, and opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-eight is approved. Article twenty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to appropriate and sum not to exceed $3,200,000 to be used as a required 25% local grant match, and authorize the Select Board to expend such sum for improvements to the Counterpain Brook drainage system, provided, however, that the funds appropriated hereunder shall not be expended unless the town is approved for a hazard mitigation assistance grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency or other grant sources. To meet this appropriation, the Treasury Collector is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, or pursuant to any other enabling authority.
Second.
All right, so this article represents, this is a borrowing article, but only if the grant is secured. So it's looking for a 25% local grant match, and it's to do all that major project work dealing with Counterpain Brook, which has been a problem for a long, long time. And once again, if the grant is not secured, then obviously, we do not borrow this money, and it doesn't matter at this point. So Article twenty-nine, questions, comments, or discussion? It's all contingent on us getting the grant. There being none. All in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-nine is approved. Article thirty.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $125,000, and authorize the Select Board to expend said sum for construction services to build the Mass. Central Rail Trail, Clinton, and other project costs associated with completing the first built phase of this project, provided, however, that the funds appropriated hereunder shall not be expended unless the town is approved for a Mass. Trails grant from the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation or other grant sources in the amount of $500,000.
Second.
All right, Article thirty is another one contingent on securing a grant. If the grant does come in, this money would be taken from free cash, but once again, only if the grant is awarded. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article thirty?
Eugene Nietzsche Berlin Street. I live right in front of the rail trail there, and I've met people from all over the whole state. This thing is gonna be open to everybody in the whole state. Why isn't the state paying for it? Why are the Clinton taxpayers paying for it?
Well, I, I think the state is gonna pay for most of it because of that grant, but we, we have to show that we support it by providing money if indeed we get the grant.
$125,000 worth of support? Let the state pay.
Any other discussion on that? If not, what's that? Oh, yes, Bill.
I don't know much about this article.
The, the mic.
I don't think it's on.
No, it isn't.
All I know about it is I'm reading the article, and it says it's contingent on a, a grant amount of $500,000 the state's gonna be contributing. So it's, they're asking for a town share of 20% of the cost of the project. I think that's a, a deal you should take.
Do remember that most of the grants we get in this town, they don't just give the money for free, they, they also want a buy-in from the town. What's the town gonna do about it? And that's our share. Any other discussion on Article twenty? No, I'm sorry, Article thirty? Okay, there...
It's on now?
Okay. Any other discussion on Article thirty? There being none. All in favor of Article thirty signify by raising your cards now? Thank you, and opposed? Thank you. Article thirty has been approved. Article thirty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move to table this article.
Second.
Article thirty-one has to do with negotiations which are still ongoing, so we are not ready to bring this forth. All those in favor of cabling Article thirty-one, please signify by raising your cards now. And opposed? Thank you. Article thirty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $36,216, said some to be expended by the police chief to fund wages, benefits, and retroactive wages for FY 2024 and FY 2025 as part of a negotiated agreement between the Town of Clinton through the Select Board and public safety dispatchers through Mass. COP Local 490 for the period July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2025, having been negotiated in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 150E, as amended.
Second.
All right, Article thirty-two. Go ahead, Aaron.
Do you want to go first, or you want me to go?
No, go ahead. You go first.
Hi, everybody. Erin Powell, Brendan Road, Finance Committee Chair. You might not have even noticed this, but it doesn't say Finance Committee approved in your packet on this article because we didn't have the dollar amount when we voted on these. We did meet right before this meeting, and the Finance Committee has voted to approve this amount.
Thank you. So $36,000, a little bit over $36,000, and, and negotiations have been completed and agreed upon, and obviously, FinCom has approved it at this point. So any, just, any other discussion on Article thirty-two? If not, all those in favor of Article thirty-two, cards up? Thank you, and opposed? Thank you. The article has been approved. Article thirty-three.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to rescind its prior acceptance of Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-two, Section forty-eight, Civil Service, as approved under Article five of the special town meeting held on November 18, 1936, and remove the Clinton Police Department from the provisions of civil service laws and/or any civil service rules and regulations, provided that such revocation shall not affect the existing civil service rights of any police officer employed in the Clinton Police Department as of the date of this vote.
Second.
All right, Article thirty-three is calling to drop civil service, allow us to create our own system, and it's supported, I believe, by the, by the Clinton PD. Chief, you want to say a few words on it? I don't think he did either, but...
Thank you, Brian Coyne, 66 Fairmont Street, the Chief of Police. Numbered police departments throughout the state and many around us have been withdrawn from civil service, and there are many in the process, like us, planning their exits from civil service. The town and the Police Officers Union have already agreed to support efforts to rescind the acceptance of civil service for police officers. We've already been working together on developing policies and procedures to cover the hiring, promotion, and disciplinary processes. Policies and procedures are gonna be a collaborative effort between the Union and the Chief of Police. Members of the department will continue to be assured of a fair process throughout their careers for hiring, promotion, and disciplinary appeals. I have a lot more information if anybody has any questions about it. I'll remain up here if anybody has any comments or questions, wants to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Kevin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kevin Tivn, a lifelong resident of Clinton and Holborn. I had the honor and privilege to serve the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on the Civil Service Commission as the Commissioner for sixteen years, and served under four governors. My term on the Commission expired officially the end of April. I am now retired at age sixty-seven. The Massachusetts Civil Service Commission is a five-member quasi-judicial appellate board within the Executive Office for Administration and Finance. Civil Service Commission hears and decides appeals from tenured civil service employees and candidates for civil service positions who believe that an appointment, promotion, or disciplinary decision was either not based on basic merit principles and/or was not supported by a preponderance of evidence. The Civil Service Commission hears appeals. The Massachusetts Human Resources Division is responsible for administering all civil service exams for public safety positions in the approximately 130 municipalities covered by our civil service law. According to the most recent Post Massachusetts Human Resources Division data, we currently in Massachusetts have 12,681 police officers working in our cities and towns. 3,251, or 25% of those police officers, work in non-civil service police departments, and 7,000, 9,428, or 75%, work in civil service departments. Now we have Article thirty-three on our town warrant that seeks to request the towns to opt out of civil service for police officers that become employed in the future. All current police members will remain under the protections of Massachusetts Civil Service Law. A twenty-nine-member Massachusetts Special Legislative Reform Commission, consider, consisting of numerous stakeholders to study the civil service law, has conducted approximately thirty-five public hearings and has received input from hundreds of civil service system stakeholders all over the Commonwealth for the past two years, and has now resulted in the creation of Massachusetts House Bill Number 4,520, an Act to Modernize the Civil Service Law, to assist in recruiting and hiring of municipal public safety employees. This is a comprehensive, twenty-six-page bill, legislation that will be voted by our state legislature by the end of July 2024 coming up, before the formal session of the legislature ends and goes out of business on July 31st. This bill, when enacted in a law, will be the most far-reaching and comprehensive civil service reforms in more than sixty years. The civil service reforms will include, and I'll shorten all of this, new alternative pathway option for entry-level police departments, a larger pool of candidates for consideration from traditional civil service process, streamlined approval process for police cadet programs, new diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI, unit at the state level to assist cities and towns with hiring and recruitment. Also, there will be a creation of a standing commission to ensure continuous improvements in the civil service system. I am asking tonight that the people, voters here, table the Warren Article to give this legislation a chance to work, because many stakeholders worked very hard over the past two years to create new and concrete systemic changes to our Commonwealth civil service system. Our police department has been covered under the protections and rights of our Massachusetts Civil Service Law since the late 1930s. A number of municipalities have filed home rule petitions with the state legislature to opt out of civil service for future hired police officers. And, but I'm asking then, in the future, to consider to retain General Laws, Chapter thirty-one, Sections forty-one to forty-five, for those new police officers that have achieved or completed one full year or twelve months as a sworn police officer. This retention of this section of the state law will enable them to have the option to either proceed to arbitration or appeal to the Massachusetts Civil Service Commission for adjudication of disciplinary matters. Finally, there appears to be confusion out there that the Post, which is the newly created last year under the reform legislation, Police Officers Standards Training Commission, now hears all police officer disciplinary matters. This is not correct. They hear only the appeals of those officers who were decertified by them. Of the more than 8,500 police officers currently certified, less than 50... the more than 8,500 police officers currently certified, less than 50 have been decertified, according to their latest numbers. I want to thank all of you for your attention to and consideration of this important matter, and please have a good evening.
So Kevin, you are making a motion to table?
To table it.
To table. All right.
To give this a chance for this legislation. 21 communities in Massachusetts have filed home rule petitions. The legislature right now has held all those in abeyance, so this reform will work. It's a 26-page, comprehensive, you can look it up, you can Google it, mass.gov. Look it up. It's complicated. It's 26 pages, and I'm telling you, a lot of people worked very, very hard on this, including myself and others while I was on the Commission, and I really, really believe it's going to work.
All right, you're making a motion to table Article 33, correct?
Yes, I am.
Is there a second to that? Second. All right, now we'll just simply discuss the amendment. Brian, did you have your hand up? All right, so we're, right now, we're on Article 33, but we're only discussing Kevin's amendment, which is to just table the whole thing. I don't know if I did that right.
Thank you. I respect Mr. Tivn and the work he's done in civil service, and I think civil service definitely had a place, and I think civil service recognizes they have problems, which is why there's so many sweeping changes that are in the pipeline that are being considered by the legislature. I think they've understood in the past, and other police departments have recognized, as well as our police departments, and members of our department have recognized the problems with HRD and the testing procedures and the process. I'll just say the current state of policing is very different than it was in 1936, when the Town of Clinton adopted the provisions of civil service. I can tell you from personal experience that we're very different, that the, that policing is very different when I began my career as a police officer 27 years ago here in the Town of Clinton. Things are changing even more rapidly in the last couple of years. It was a great system in the past, and I don't think it's keeping up with modern-day policing. Not only is policing changed over the years, but our community has changed as well. I believe that moving out of civil service now will help us create a system of hiring and promoting officers who can better represent and better serve our community and meet our needs going forward. Recruitment and hiring officers has significantly changed over the years, especially the last few years, where there isn't as much interest in being a law enforcement officer in this position of a police officer. We know this nationally and throughout the Commonwealth. Luckily for us, we have continued to hire high-quality candidates, but we have seen the list of eligible candidates shrink considerably. Under the current civil service system, we only have the option to hire from the top three candidates from that list. Sometimes we lose out on the option to consider other candidates with special skills, experience, academy training, language proficiencies, et cetera. Some of the benefits to the town I see: career flexibility within the hiring promotional process, shorter timeframes for hiring and promoting, not waiting for scheduled civil service exams. The police department can set minimum eligibility guidelines, not allowed under civil service, such as higher education, language proficiencies, et cetera. The town and department can determine when hiring proficiencies they want to acknowledge. Instead of choosing from the top three candidates, like I said, we could have a much larger candidate pool to select from. I think the civil service has run its course through negotiations and talking with members of the department, and the Union is on board, the town is on board, myself as the police chief. I've been promoted through the civil service process. I was hired under civil service. I became sergeant. I became lieutenant, and I became chief. And I've seen some of the problems in civil service, some of the timeframes, some of the delays that it's created. I think it was a great system when it was created. I think that modern-day policing, hiring, recruiting, and retaining officers and promoting officers, I think we need a new system, and I think the Town of Clinton could take that on, and we could do it ourselves. Thank you.
All right. I think I blew that last one, but what we're really talking about is tabling this. All right, so please keep it to, shall we table this or not? Why we should table it or why we shouldn't?
Mr. Moderator, Bill Conley Jr., 46 Winthrop Street. Getting tired of getting up here. I have too many opinions, and I can't keep my mouth shut, but I urge you to vote no on tabling this article. Discuss it, debate it, and vote on it. Twenty years ago, the Board of Selectmen was working on trying to do away with civil service. The problem is in the hiring process. You can only pick from the top three, and you actually have to pick the top one that the civil service tells you. It's time for the state to stop telling you who you have as police officers and trust your police chief and your Board of Selectmen and your town administrator to do the hiring for you. Thank you.
Yes, Mike.
I'm Michael Jakonski. I served for a few years with Billy Constantino. I was 15 years on the Board of Selectmen. I'm a member of the Finance Committee. And I know that Kevin, with a good heart and good faith, suggests that we should let the state straighten this out. The current civil service system, the hiring process is horrendous. It results in vacancies in the police department for long periods of time, which raises the overtime and which lessens protection to the citizenry. Just before the meeting started, Bill and I were talking about the school article, and $139 million sort of makes people gag, including the people up there and the people at the school. And we were talking about, could it be done cheaper? Well, yes, it could, but not under current legislation, not under current state regulation. I mean, the kindness of the state legislature is causing us to spend much more money on the school than probably has to be spent. We have an option to get out from under the heel of the Commonwealth and save some money with the police. I urge you not to table this and to vote in the affirmative once it comes up.
Anything else?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we...
Move the question?
Move the question.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of moving the question first, cards up. All right, and opposed to moving the question. All right, that's fine. Now we're going to the table. All those in favor of tabling Article 33, signify by raising your card now. Thank you. And those opposed to tabling. Thank you. All right, there will be no table of it. Now we're back to the original article, Article 33. Are we ready to vote on Article 33? No, we're not.
There is a, hi, Charles Callender, 33 Beet Street. There's a typo in the article. We want to rescind Chapter 31, Section 48, not Chapter 32, Section 48. Chapter 31 is about civil service. Chapter 32 is about police pensions, so we probably need to amend that.
Thank you, sir. You want to? My secret fan. Do you want him to repeat that? Do you want to repeat that?
Chapter 31 is, Chapter 32.
Nice and slow about the law, so we can check it up here. So it says, what? I don't have it in front of me.
It says Chapter 32, Section 48, and it should be Chapter 31, Section 48.
Chapter 30, it says Chapter 32, and it should be Chapter 31?
Yes.
Should have gone to law school. Okay. Sir, you are correct, so I don't know if we need to amend it. Thank you. But we are talking about Chapter 31 before you vote. Chapter 31, not 32. All right, where the heck were we?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that we amend the Article 33 to read Mass General Law, Chapter 31, Section 48.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? I think we've had enough of that. So all those in favor of correcting the article signify by raising your hand. Card now and opposed. Thank you. So the amendment is now saying it's Chapter 31. All right, we ready to vote now? Okay. All those in favor of Article 33 signify by raising...
31.
raising your card now, please. Thank you. And opposed. Thank you. The Article 33 is approved with that amendment. Thank you. Article 34, here we go.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to negotiate and grant any required utility easements on the right-of-way known as Ring Court to the United Way of Tri-County in connection with the construction of the wheat project at 224 230 High Street, and to authorize the Select Board to take all steps necessary, including executing documents necessary for the granting of such easements upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems to be in the best interests of the town.
Second.
All right, this article is simply to allow a utility easement for the new wheat building that's going to be built on High Street at Ring Court, across from Prospect Street. Questions, comments, or discussion? It's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by raising your card now, please. Thank you and opposed. Article 34 is approved. Article 35.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain any and all permanent and/or temporary easements for the purpose of repairing, improving, or reconstructing Sterling Street and/or the sidewalks, drainage facilities, and appurtenances related thereto in connection with the Sterling Street reconstruction project, and to authorize the Select Board to take all steps necessary, including executing documents and appropriating from available funds money necessary for such acquisitions, upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems to be in the best interests of the town.
Second.
All right, Article 35 is simply to allow town officials to begin the easement process. There's going to be a big, major improvements done on Sterling Street, and they need to do that. This is a two-thirds vote. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor and opposed. Thank you. Article 35 has been approved. Article 36.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to impose a one-year moratorium on the issuance of any new licenses for Class II motor vehicle sales under Mass General Law, Chapter 140.
Second.
All right, one-year moratorium on Class II car lots. Questions, comments, or discussions? Sir, you should have sat closer.
Eugene Niche, Berlin Street. Having been a licensed used car dealer in the Town of Clinton for the last 27 years, I'm wondering why they're single out used car dealers?
Perhaps the Board can answer that for you.
I mean, people have a right to make a living.
Yes.
And more competition in town brings people into town.
All right, thank you. Jimmy, you got something to say on this one?
Jim Salmon, 3 Sprague Road, on the town's building inspector and zoning agent. This is at the Planning Board's request that we could do a study on used car licenses that we have. We now have 27, and we'd like to do a review of what other towns have for the size of the town, square footage, and the population. Right now, we break down about one used car dealer for every 600 people, and we just want a year's time off to review it and maybe change some of the regulations that we have now.
Shouldn't we do this with all business licenses in town, then? To do a study on them all?
No.
Question?
And we just...
Shouldn't we do this with all business licenses in town, so you can study all of them?
Well, right now, we're just single-delt in used car licenses to be studied.
Well, it's not right to single out just one business. Do them all.
I think it's in the town's best interest to review it for a year before...
I think it's in the town's best interest to do everybody.
Liquor stores, bars, restaurants.
Again, it's only one year. It's kind of a one-year timeout.
You're depriving people of making a living.
We're not depriving anybody. They still have their licenses. We just want to do a review for a year.
There's people that want to come in and open up a new shop.
Yep.
And you're depriving them. They're going to go somewhere else.
This is a request of the Planning Boards. I'm simply the messenger.
When you have more dealers in town, there's more competition. People come from Fitchburg, Worcester, everywhere, not only to buy a car. They stop at the restaurants, McDonald's, they get the whole town business. This is just a brush from years past. Somebody I know. Won't mention any names, but...
Mr. Moderator.
Well, sir, it's...
No, no.
Yeah, it's, it is what it is, and it's not putting anybody out of business. It's taking a year off from letting them start one. Maybe in a year, we're going to open it back up again. We probably will.
That's not right. And you should do it to all businesses. Well...
That would be taken up with the Planning Board at their next meeting, if you want to do it to all businesses.
Just saying, if you want to be fair, do it to all businesses.
All right.
Either that or scrap this.
Any other questions or comments on Article 36? Again, it's a one-year timeout, is all it really is. All right, there being none. All those in favor of Article 36 signify by raising your card now. Thank you and opposed. Thank you. The article has been approved. We're on Article 37. Not many more to go, folks.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the filing of special legislation to allow the Select Board issue six additional Chapter 138, Section 12, all alcohol pouring liquor licenses to be located in downtown Clinton target area, notwithstanding the limitation on the number of such licenses which may be granted. Said licenses to be issued within three years from the effective date of state legislation approval.
Second.
All right, this is to allow six additional pouring licenses, but targeted for the general downtown area. And from what I understand, that is not, doesn't mean High Street, the general area. Questions, comments, or discussions? There being none. All those in favor of Article 37, cards up and opposed. Thank you. Article 37 is approved. Article 38.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, as amended by the Chapter 77, Section 9, and Section 197 of the Acts of 2023, to establish an opioid special revenue fund for opioid settlement receipts, revoke the existing opioid settlement stabilization fund, and transfer all monies from said revoked stabilization fund to the newly created special revenue fund.
Second.
All right, so several years ago, the state required us to do an opioid stabilization account. Now they've changed their mind, and we can simply create a special revenue fund instead, which gives more flexibility to the town. Still used for exactly the same reasons, but this adds more flexibility. So it's closing one account and putting the money into a new account. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor, cards up. Thank you and opposed. Thank you. The article is approved. Article 39.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the administrative bylaws of the town to add the following new section, Town of Clinton Wetlands Protection Bylaw. The purpose of this bylaw is to protect the wetlands, water resources, flood-prone areas, and adjoining upland areas in the Town of Clinton by controlling activity...
and adjoining upland areas in the Town of Clinton by controlling activities deemed by the Conservation Committee Commission likely to have a significant or cumulative effect on resources area values. And, Mr. Moderator, I further move that we dispense with reading of the remainder of the text for this article as it is included in the law.
Second.
Thank you, Lord. Okay. This is a complete and very extensive overhaul of local bylaws by our Conservation Committee. And, and I have not had time to read it, and I probably wouldn't understand it anyway. I hope there's someone here present tonight who could talk about these changes in some way. Is there?
Mr. Moderator, David Sadowski, Cedar Street, Clinton. I move that we table this article. I don't think that this article has been around long enough to be discussed, to look at the values of it. Right now, the Department of Environmental Protection has laws in place that protect everyone in the Commonwealth, whether you're at riverfront, waterfront, wetlands, whatever. All those laws right now are updated all the time to protect the people of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. To throw something in that restricts the Town of Clinton only without a discussion or without being able to review this just seems like it's a little bit harsh, almost like talking about civil service the way that it controls things. I don't think this should be entered into the bylaws until a discussion of the article is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a, is there a second to table it? Second, okay. Yes, sir. I mean, this is very, very extensive and, and short of saying we have to pass it before we read it, like other people have said in Washington.
John Woodsmalle, 17 James Street. So, I'm gonna ask that people not table this so we can have more discussion on it. In general, just because this is the first time you're seeing it does not mean that this has not been discussed by the committee that created it. I am not affiliated with the Conservation Commission. I was its chair for a number of years, about 10, 15 years ago. I also happened in my day job to sit on the Advisory Committee to DEP on its changes to its wetlands. And this is the first changes, they haven't changed anything since 2008. The, the state doesn't do anything fast. This, and I hope somebody from the Conservation Commission can speak to this further, but I would ask you to not table this right now so we can have a more in-depth conversation. And just because people haven't seen it before, that's on them, and it doesn't mean that it's not a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Larry Binder, Water Street. Just kind of interested in understanding anything regarding wetlands, assignments of wetlands, assignment of flood plain and therefore flood zone, therefore flood insurance. That could be staggering for homeowners if that is changed. So, I would say that need more consideration.
You're in favor of tabling it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Others? Yes?
Hi, Kimberly Ross, I'm the Conservation Commission's current chair. I ask that you not table this, and we have a further discussion. Much of this bylaw mimics what the state, current state Wetlands Protection Act states. A few changes would be to incorporate isolated lands. This came out of a municipal vulnerability program grant that was given to the Town of Clinton in a study with Bolton, and one of the recommendations from the consultants for, from this project in terms of flood resiliency was for Clinton to adopt a wetlands bylaw. This has not, this does not confer regulations. That would still be the next steps for more specific protections. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone else? We had some, some arguments for tabling. We've had some for against tabling. Anyone else want to weigh in on tabling or not? Yes, sir? Haven't seen you in a long time.
Long time. Jim Tumalo, Three Shore Labs.
You're gonna need the American Idol to look. In there.
An article this big should have had a public hearing, should have been advertised so you, the people, would know what it would do to your property. I, I've looked at this for 20 minutes. I don't know what it says, and it may be a good idea, but you put something in and you'll find out that you can't add an addition to your garage, or something's changed in the laws that worked two years ago. I ask that we table it, have a public hearing, get people informed, and if it's a good article, it'll get passed. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I move the question.
Move the question, okay. All those in favor of moving, stopping debate and moving the question signify by raising your card now, please, and opposed. All right, we will, the question has been moved, so it's time to, to, where are we? We're on tabling. We're on tabling. All those in favor of tabling, where the heck am I? Article 39, signify by raising your card now, those who wish to table it. Thank you. And those opposed to tabling? Thank you. The article will not be tabled.
It will be tabled.
It will be tabled. This is past my bedtime. I just want everyone to know that. Okay. The article is tabled, thank you. Wasn't close. All right, Article 40.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to move Article 40. Will the town set forth a vote for the residents of Clinton to opt out of the Massachusetts Stretch Energy Code amendments, 225 CMR, 2200, and 225 CMA, 2300, and revert back to the unamended version of the Massachusetts Base Energy Codes, which are more affordable for town residents or act of anything related thereto?
Second.
All right, Article 40 is to revert back to, we're currently in a stretch code. This would be back to basic code. However, before we have any discussion, there is a problem with the way the article was written. We cannot go back to an unamended, um, basic code, all right? Every code, there's only three choices by law. Basic, the base energy code, which includes the amendments and the changes that the state has made to that code, or the stretch energy code, which is what you have now, plus the state amendments that have been added to that code, or the specialized energy code, plus the state amendments that have been added. So, the, the magic syllable is "un" as far as we can pass this, but it cannot be the, the, it cannot say the unamended base energy code. It would have to be the amended base code. Now, for those who are wishing to talk about that, I would have you address that. I thought your hand was up. I was hoping it was. Uh, yes.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the article from where the phrase says "unamended" to "amended version."
Okay. Let's talk about that. As I had, as I had said, we can't, it would be against the law anyway. It couldn't even be, it's unenforceable. So, if we, if we do wish to go back to the base code, it has to be the base code as amended, not an unamended one. So, any questions on that? Any, any more discussion on that? So, let's, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the, of Bill Conley's amendment, please signify by raising your cards now, please. Thank you very much and opposed. All right, now, let's talk about the article itself. Anyone want to discuss the article?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Um, just some background. The Stretch Energy Code is part of the Baker Administration's Green Communities Act of 2008. It sets higher standards of energy efficiency for new and renovated buildings than the base energy code. It's designed to help the state meet its greenhouse gas emissions go, goal, excuse me, which is to be net zero by 2050. We passed it, this board, this body here, in 2019 as Clinton's, part of Clinton's path to become a green community, which happened in 2021. Being a green community not only shows our commitment to reducing energy usage and lowering greenhouse gases, it also makes us eligible for straight grant, state grant money, of which we have received $165,000 to date. Money supporting, oh, sorry. Repealing this law will make us ineligible to remain a green community and to receive any future grant money from that program. I'm not sure if we'd have to return the $165,000. To date, more than 300 Massachusetts cities and towns have adopted the stretch code, repealing it five years after we joined that number as a U-turn in the wrong direction. Some might point that Massachusetts is one of only three states, along with California and New York, who have adopted such codes. When it comes to something like energy efficiency, I'm proud that we're a leader, and I'm proud that Clinton's part of that group. Change is hard, but these regulations are coming for everyone. We cannot ignore the impact we have on climate change, and we should be doing more, not less, to combat it. I urge you to vote no.
Yes.
Ed? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to speak in favor of this, to selectman Carrigan correctly pointing out, yes, is $160,000 in funding, but in my opinion, that funding pales in the comparison to the cost that would be shouldered by you if you're interested in making renovations to your, your home or your business. I'm generally in favor of, of initiatives, of green initiatives, and against, you know, things to help climate change, but this code is, is very oppressive. Just to give you an example, so if you do any addition to your house right now over 1,000 square feet, or if it's over 50% the square footage of your existing property, you would have to update your entire house to be able to just do that addition. And there's a lot of older homes in Clinton, so, you know, this could be, this could be very problematic for someone that's trying to increase their property value and, and do an addition to their home. Another point I just want to bring up is, at our last Select Board meeting, we really, and I think correctly went out of our way to, to comment that a lot of property, commercial property owners in Clinton really need to get their, their businesses up to code so that businesses can rent, so we can stop having empty storefronts. And I think to be consistent, if we do, if we're gonna go with that message, we should be making renovations easier for commercial property owners, not more difficult. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion before we vote on Article 40 as amended? I, yes, sir?
I, I'm not sure if everybody else is like me, but I just learned about these stretch codes today. And as he was saying, I was gonna build a new house, but not now unless this gets voted out. It's crazy that what the state wants you to do. I believe it's only California, New York, and Massachusetts that does it. I mean, you have to put brackets on your roof for solar panels, whether you have solar panels or not. You have to have R29 insulation in your ceiling. You have to have triple-pane windows instead of double-pane windows. You have to have an EV charge station on the side of your house, whether you have an electric car or not. It's crazy, and I urge everybody to opt out of this.
Thank you, sir. Anything else before we vote? Yes, Bill?
Try the speaker again, this microphone again. Mr. Moderator, I urge you to vote to remove us from the stretch code. It, that, that code probably added $1 million to the cost of the new middle school. For each and every one of you that has a house that's even 50 years old, the, the cost of implementing this stretch code is prohibitive now to you. As a gentleman said, maybe I should have sat further back, and I wouldn't be grabbing the microphone so much, but if you, if you reach the thresholds on a renovation project of your home that could be 50, 80, 100 years old in town, you have to do just what he said. You have to make provisions for solar panels, and you have to have provisions for a, a charging station for an electric car. It's, it's, the, if, if, if we keep it, maybe the town should contribute back to the taxpayers who are negatively affected and pay for the cost of it instead of making the homeowners pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I think it's time to vote. So, all, all those in favor of Article 40, which is to revert back to the base energy code as amended by the state? Signify by raising your card now, please, and opposed. Thank you. Article 40 has been approved. Last article. Article 41.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to move Article 41 to see if the town will vote to designate 239 Chestnut Street as a dog park and to raise, appropriate or transfer a sum of $69,900 or any other sum to be used towards the initial capital improvements, namely fencing, lighting, equipment, and landscape materials.
Second.
All right, this is, uh, this is on a dog park? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I, my name is Josh. Thanks for staying. I thought we'd be here much later. I am speaking on behalf of a group of Clinton residents, mostly dog owners with some non-dog owners as well, who are looking to put a dog park here in town. Designated a spot at 239 Chestnut Street, which is the old, is it the VFW?
Legion Hall.
Legion Hall site, which is next to the Verizon site, a couple doors down from the senior center and Central Park. We have about as many dogs as we have kids in this town, lots of places for the kids to go. I have kids, too, lots of places for them. We need a place for the folks to take their dogs, let them off the leash. It's a small amount of money for some fencing, some lighting, and some basic equipment, some benches. In my discussions with folks, with the town, some of the concerns have been about liability insurance, and after doing just a little bit of research, it sounds like, well, the mayor of Fitchburg has expressed that this is covered as long as it's a public park, open to the people. It should be covered, no additional liability. So, I think that was the biggest expense besides the $69,000. I think there are some soft costs involved on the planning side, engineering, things like that, that aren't included in that. But those are for capital expenses. It's a 1.3-acre site. It's empty, ready to go. People are using it, neighbors are using it as a parking lot now, and it's just going to waste. I'd love to, we'd love to see it utilized for this purpose.
All right, thank you. This, this was not approved by, by the Finance Committee, so right now, there's, there is no funding to it. But I do want to make sure we mention, I think this is an important topic. It's, it's important to a lot of people, but I do want to make sure everyone understands that, that from, by law, the, the Select Board is the only entity that can decide how public property is used, all right? They're the only one. So, if this were to be voted in, which, which is fine by me, but if 100% of you voted for this, number one, it's not funded, and number two, it would be like advisory only. So, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, and I know we have some people who want to talk about it, and I think we should talk about it. I'm simply saying that whatever is voted tonight, this group here doesn't really have to follow it. So, maybe you need to make sure that they know where you stand on things, and then we, we take it from there, okay?
Thanks, sorry. I was just advised, and I'm not sure I, I fully understand. Right now, there's no funding source, right? And we have to, I guess, amend the article to say something to the effect of pulling the money from the capital account.
We, we can't because we passed the budget and, and we reconsidered the budget. So, in, in reality, there, there is no way to, there is no way to fund it now. We can talk about establishing one, which I think we should do, we're all here.
Sure.
And here we are.
I guess I'll ask for some advice from other folks if there's support for it, which I believe that there is. But, yeah, let's, let's talk.
Somebody else want to talk about it? Yes?
Sue Smetler, Stone Street. I'm a dog owner, and I'm really-
I'm a dog owner, and I'm really in favor of a dog park, but several questions here. I think we need more discussion. I think choosing, to your point, the, the governing board should vet all the options. I'm not sure that choosing a piece of property that's already being considered for the library or other use is able to be used as part of this petition. I propose that we table it for a year and do our due diligence and, and find the best option.
Is, is that a motion to table?
I guess I would wait, because it seems there are others that would like discussion, and then I will get on.
Thank you, thank you. Go ahead, Deb.
Deborah Goodsell, 24 Shobert Street in Clinton. And I just want to let you know, I realize this is not going to happen tonight, but I'm really glad it came before the town tonight. This has been needed for a very long time. The Select Board voted unanimously in 2017 to form a committee to look into a dog park for the Town of Clinton. Mr. Carrigan said he would serve on that committee back in 2017. So I'm glad this came back up again, so that it's before the public again. It's something that's needed, and maybe this time we'll follow through.
Mr. Moderator, just a point of clarification. We did advertise for a citizens committee. I think we had one volunteer, Mr. Kovas. So the, the temperature for this has been lukewarm, to say the best. I'm glad that it's being brought forward now, but again, just to make sure the record stays.
Thank you. More, more discussion. Like I said, I didn't want to rain on anybody's parade, but I just wanted everyone to know, number one, there, there is no funding, and number two, it's advisory only. However, we have a captive audience. We have the group that can make decisions in the future about this. So why not tell them your feelings about it and, and talk about the pros and the cons, if that's what you want to do? And if not, we'll, we can, we could vote to table. Yes, uh, Gloria.
Yeah, hello, everyone. I'm Gloria Parkinson. I live at 90 Haskell Avenue. I have a dog, love dog, so this is actually a point of information, Mr. Moderator. Miss, uh, it was referenced. Uh, the, the town has just made an application to the Massachusetts Library Commissioners. So the town's application was actually submitted on Friday. So on behalf of all those who worked on it, thank you. And that is a grant for either a new or an updated library. I, I'm a trustee of the library, and I'm also on a subcommittee of the, the building committee.
Gloria, we're talking about dogs here.
I'm talking about what?
We're talking about dogs. Woof, woof.
I'm, no, yeah, I'm talking about the site.
Oh, okay, oh, all right.
Yeah, I, I'm just, is the point, yes. I can woof as well, but no. The site, um, which has been, is on your, of Cedar Street, and it is owned by the town. It is the second site on, on the application that was sent to the state on Friday for a library grant. The part of the grant is you have to submit two sites for the application. One site is the current library that we love so much over there. And the second site, after a lot of looking for sites, is that Cedar, is the one up here.
Gloria, so what are you suggesting about the dog park?
So I'm, oops. I'm suggesting that when people get together, to be aware that that site is currently being looked at.
I see. So look at alternative sites or something like that?
And, and, yeah, and if we don't get the grant for the library, then it becomes available again. So, okay, so long-winded, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I make a motion that we table Article 41.
I think it's already been done, but that's school second. All right, um, any discussion on that? All in favor of tabling Article 41 on the dog park? Signify by raising your card now, please, and opposed. Thank you very much. The article, it has been tabled. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Beautiful. Thank you so much for coming. Don't forget, next week, Monday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, voting right here. Town election and ballot. Thank you.